Recording in progress.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, December 20th, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is our accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we'd like to recognize our employees of the month. Our December employees of the month are Jennifer Bowling and Katie Shermyer. They work at our St. Joe County 911 Center. Earlier this month, Jennifer received a 911 call from Charles Machen. He had fallen in his driveway and needed help getting back up. Jennifer stayed on the phone with him till help had arrived. She then later called back, Mr. Machen, and told him that her coworker would bring him a bag of salt after work. Her coworker, Katie Shermyer, stopped by Mr. Machen's house on her way home to salt his driveway. We want to thank Jennifer and Katie for going above and beyond to help a citizen of St. Joe County, and we commend your diligence.
I think the director needs to step up to the microphone, please, with the two employees. Come on, get up there.
Julie Toby, Executive Director for the P S F, 58266 Downey Avenue. I'm super proud of these two. They are all working long hours, 12 hours every day. They continuously come into work trying to help other people, and we don't get a lot of good outcomes. So this was definitely a positive opportunity that we were able to capitalize on, and they definitely deserve the recognition.
Y'all need to say something. Come on. How long have you worked there?
Oh, great question. I've been there five years. Five years, oh.
I've been there seven.
And thank you so much for all your hard work. Thank you.
And Ms. Toby, on a yearly basis, how many calls y'all get to come into the 911 Center?
About 450,000.
Okay. It's quite voluminous, and then that I think equates to over 100,000 dispatches that go out. But I think the general public doesn't know, like being inside all day, answering phones 12 hours, looking at computers, very stressful. So I appreciate the work that you guys have done. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Lovely to see great women. Yes.
Don't go back.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the reappointment to the Board of Health of John Lynn. Any questions or do we have a motion?
No motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is the appointment of Kristen Vincent to the Board of Health, replacing Dr. Kirsch's position. Ms. Vincent is somebody we interviewed and talked to her recently about this position. Questions or comments?
I'll move for approval.
There's a motion to approve.
You can second.
I'll second that now. Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution R-27-C-2022, Approval of a Real Estate Purchase Agreement at 14380 East Douglas Road, Mishawaka. Mr. Shalio?
Yes, good morning. Bill Shalio, Economic Development Director, part of Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the 7th and the 11th floor. R-27-C-2022 is a purchase agreement resolution for property at 14380 East Douglas Road. This is two properties to the east of a property the Board of Commissioners entered into an agreement for a couple of meetings ago. This property is part of a property that would be purchased for expansion at Douglas Road. What we're asking for your approval to do today is approve an agreement, a purchase agreement, subject to appraisals and the setting of the value. So what we need to do is ask for your approval for a signature on the purchase agreement so that it can be set into escrow and held until such time as the appraisals have been obtained. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
On this, your colored thing here, that's the blue section?
Yes, yep. So it's, the last meeting, we approved the triangular-ish piece, a couple to the west or left of that parcel.
Cool. And do you have, on that whole part there, do you know when that whole Douglas Road stuff will be?
So the Redevelopment Commission next year will be asked to do a finalized study of that corridor in partnership with Indot and City of Mishawaka. So we'll finalize the corridor next year as part of the work that we'll be doing.
Cool, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate doing that and helping everything up. Good job. Nice job.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the real estate purchase agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have two items regarding the Tyler Munis ERP contract. First is the Contract Change Order Number Six. Mr. Fotia?
Good morning, Commissioners. Frank Fotia, Project Manager for the Board of Commissioners, offices on the 7th floor of this building. Before you today are two change orders, Number Six and Number Seven, to the Tyler Munis Enterprise Resource Planning Implementation Contract. The first order, Change Order Number Six, provides for the additional days of implementation services and project management services from the Tyler side to get us from July of this year through our new go-live dates of October of next year for the financial side and January 1st of '24 for the human capital management side. The next change order, Number Seven, is in conjunction with that. Tyler has agreed to give us 10 days on their dime. So Change Order Seven provides for those 10 implementation days that Tyler is giving to us at no cost, and Change Order Six takes care of the days that the county would then be responsible for.
Any questions from the board?
Just, Frank, do you foresee further change orders as you get this thing straightened out, or?
At this particular point in time, I do not. This should cover anything that we would need to do between now and the next go-live, or our potential go-live dates.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, do we have a motion?
Do we do it one at a time?
Let's do it one at a time. I'm sorry.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Change Order Number Six first.
Okay, a motion to approve the Change Order Number Six for the Tyler Munis ERP.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have a motion on Change Order Number Seven.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the County Police, we have two items, Approval of Purchase of Two 2023 Chevy Equinox LS Vehicles.
Good morning. Dean Chandler, Patrol Commander, 4141 Lathrup Street in South Bend. I'd like to purchase two unmarked Chevy Equinox, all-wheel drive. This would be like a same bid as the Park Department did in October. They were able to get two more vehicles. Vehicles are very hard to come by right now, so I'd like to purchase these two vehicles. They would be $25,715.87 apiece. That does include a $2,000 trade-in and a $2,800 rebate from gates. Any questions?
Yeah, did you guys, are you still considering going with Enterprise on stuff, or?
Yes, so I found out, well, that's on the next thing I was gonna talk about, but...
I'm sorry.
No, you're good. I'm kinda hurting for cars for, right now, for these two, and we'd like to get these two as soon as possible to issue out.
Because after first of the year, when things may slow down, we're gonna bring Carl to speed on what we do.
Correct. I think we have a meeting January 12th with Enterprise.
Okay.
And so, well, I'll talk about the next thing.
And we just had a meeting last week with the sheriff.
Correct.
And he, again, stated his interest in going that route.
We'd like to look at that. We have some, some things we'd have to work out, but Major Noonan and myself are having a meeting the 12th of January.
Good. Any other comments or questions on the first item? If not, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the purchase of the two Chevy Equinox vehicles.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval to start the bid process.
The second thing is, I understand that Ford is opening up bidding or ordering for 2023 police vehicles. Y'all know it was very hard to get police vehicles last year. They canceled my order after 11 months. So I'd like to open up bids for it. The advertised dates are the 23rd and the 30th. We would open bids on the 10th, but just, well, we would receive the bids on the 10th, but we can, once we receive them, we can standby it. We have that January 12th meeting, and they're running anywhere from four to six months for building them.
About how many vehicles, do you think?
Probably five or six right now.
Five or six vehicles, right?
Police patrol vehicles, yes.
I think it's a good idea to get started.
Yes, I always try to do it in January.
Yeah, even if we end up going the lease route.
Correct.
Gotta have the equipment.
Yes, sir.
If there are no other questions or comments, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the bid process for the police patrol vehicles.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Next is an item for Human Resources, Approval of a Cyber Security Insurance Renewal. Good morning, Richard.
Commissioners, how are you doing? Richard Warfield, IT Director, 2nd floor.
Well, I think you're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Kim Karkwitz, Human Resource Director, offices on the 7th floor of this building. The offering that we have in front of you today is for our cyber liability. We do also have the brokers online also, which is Gallagher, for any questions that we might have on the cyber liability policy. This was normally a rider that was on our property and liability coverages. There were some things that we needed to do here at the county to get to a point where we would be able to bind coverage, and we are at that point now and are looking to put this in place effective January 1. Open for any questions?
Richard, you and Richard explain what that consists of, a short explanation of it.
So the policy allows the county to be protected in the case of any kind of cyber attack, ransomware, things of that nature. We do have an outside company. Gallagher is the one who takes it out to bid for us, and Cowbell is the actual provider of the coverage.
And I'm assuming they do a lot of municipalities?
They do a lot of municipalities, corporations. They're very large in that arena.
Okay, and just for my own interest, how many times does that happen to municipalities?
I wouldn't be able to tell you, but it is a target that is on most, most government entities.
More times than anyone would want to admit, but it's happened quite a few times.
By nine thousand? It's more?
Uh, over the different municipalities, I couldn't even tell you, but it's happened quite a few times, so.
Okay.
I would note that this is something we looked at in the summer at a much higher premium, and you worked to get a better quote for the county.
Yes, we have done many things at the county level, thanks to our IT department, getting on a lot of the different things that needed to be addressed, and have done that, and so we are ready to move forward.
We've had this for a while, right? I mean, for...
We've had the cyber coverage as a add-on in past years, yes.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the cybersecurity insurance renewal.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to Infrastructure Planning and Growth. First item is our Consent Agenda. Your revocable letter of credit has been posted for Inverness Woods subdivision. Bill?
Nope.
I thought you wanted to say something.
Just getting ready for the next one.
Mr. Mish, should we do these, do we do this one for both, or do we have to do them individually?
The consent agenda, we can just do this one.
Okay. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Otherwise, do we have a motion?
Have you mentioned both of them?
Yes.
Then a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Approval of the NCEDA Demolitions, Project Two, Change Order Number One with the Richard Brothers.
Yep, in your packet, again, Bill Shalio, Economic Development, in your packet is Change Order Number One for the NCEDA Demolitions Group Two project. That was demolished 494 and 496 East Michigan Street in New Carlisle. That was the trailer park and the adjacent house that was part of the trailer park complex. We completed the project, but due to additional work that we did to support the New Carlisle utilities and some other work that needed to be done, just to take down extra trees and some other stuff, we ended up with additional cost in the project. We are still under the 20% cap for overhead charges, but the total additional amount was $18,435. So it brings the contract to a total amount of $96,525, and staff would request your approval of this change order, please.
This was a project that has gone on for quite a while. I'm glad to see that it finally moved ahead.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll ask it before, I don't know if he's here, Dan Crusoe, but the total, the cost for the trailer park and cleaning that up, what was that total figure, 600 something?
I think it was, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, but the trailer park and this demolition cost was probably 550 to 600, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood. But I can, I can get you that official number.
That's probably about right, and I'm sure Dan will correct us if we're wrong.
Any other questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve these demolitions for Project Two, Change Order Number One.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye. Next item is Approval of the Professional Services Agreement for the Capitol Avenue Trail, Riviera Drive, Addendum Number One.
So Addendum Number One adds additional funding in the amount of $13,500 to this project. We're in the process of getting it ready to bid, but have additional coordination to do with Indot and City of Mishawaka on this project. This will build a trail segment from Capitol Drive west to Brook Street along the north side of Lincoln Way. This is a huge piece in the Capitol Avenue Trail connections because it would allow for a U-loop around the river and along Capitol Avenue. So we're anticipating bidding this out in the late winter, early spring. But again, the addendum is in the amount of $13,500, bringing the total estimated project cost for the work to $43,000. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How many feet will that trail be?
So that one runs a length of Riviera Drive west, and then we're doing some additional sidewalk work to fix curb and walk on Lincoln Way. So it's about, it's not quite a quarter of a mile, but it's just in that stretch, so about 2,000 feet.
Well, that eventually end up in downtown Mishawaka, that people could jump on a bike there and end up in Niles on a bike?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a stretch of sidewalk on Lincoln Way that's missing on the north side, so it would be this piece that we're building that would get you to Capitol Avenue and then ultimately around, as the city builds the, the bridge across the river and connects the, the north side of the river into the system. So, yeah, it will be the, really kind of the eastern leg of that trail system to get you all the way west up into Nile. So this is, this is a big piece of that work.
No, that's a good thing, because again, those who walk or ride bikes on the trails that go downtown and then along Riverside and up and into Michigan and stuff, it's very unique. They have close to, I believe, 80,000 people yearly, and that's gonna increase as we go. So for those who use it, that's awesome. So we'll see you on the trail.
And I, I live not far from there, and I've always walked around there, and I see so many people. And when I was little, I would ride my bike around there too, but yeah. So yeah, there's a lot of people and kids walking around there too, and biking too, so I'm glad to do that. Thank you.
Yep. We are building a good trail network, in my opinion.
Still have that bicycle built for two?
That's right, yeah.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve this Capitol Ave Trail Agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Bill.
Nick, he's staying. He's not leaving us yet.
I was gonna say, if I can do one more, this is On Call Service Agreement Number Two with Lawson Fisher Associates. We had a On Call Service Agreement Number One that we used primarily to advance work on the Ultium Project and some other fairly substantial project leads. This is a 75,000-not-to-exceed contract. To do the work, we have to provide task summary sheets. The Redevelopment Commission approved the second On Call Service Agreement at its meeting last week, and we would ask for your approval of this agreement, please.
Any questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion on On Call Agreement Number Two with Lawson Fisher?
Motion to approve the Professional Services Agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye. I'm sorry, jumped in there with you.
Thanks, Bill.
Morning, Skye.
Good morning.
Next is Approval of the Engineering Services Agreement for the Granger East Garage Site Clearing and Demolition.
Skye Metters, Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, County Engineer, offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. What this is, is the agreement for the engineering services with DLZ to do the design and contract document preparation for the decommissioning and demolition of our Granger garage site located on Cleveland Road. We have reviewed this and recommend your approval. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What are y'all gonna keep? Anything out there?
At this point, the plan is to demo everything to bare ground. There will be some monitoring wells out there so that we can monitor some of the groundwater to make sure that we're doing what we need to do in that aspect, but as far as buildings, the plan is to have bare ground when we're done.
Thank you. That's something that's been a problem for probably 20 years, if not more, so good job to finally get that done.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve this Engineering Services Agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is Approval of Agreement between the St. Joseph County Highway Division and Teamsters Local Number 364.
What we have here is something that has been going on in the works for the past year. We have, with our Highway Department, is, is union through Teamsters Local Union Number 364, and in the past year, we've been working with the union representatives and also the union stewards of the Highway Department to come up with a new contract. The current contract expires at the end of the year, and it's, it was a three-year contract. What we have in place here is another three-year contract, and this is something that I'm, I'm pretty proud of, as far as the work that we were able to do. We were able, just some of the highlights, to get our highway workers significant pay increases for the work that they do, and, you know, with everything in the news right now, it's, we're gonna see how pretty important they are come this weekend with the forecast. But we were able to get them significant pay increases, some additional holidays and benefits, and I really think that what we have in front of us here is a very fair contract for both sides, and I recommend your approval and be happy to answer any questions.
What, basically, what's the increase in wages?
For the most, for the most part, well, pretty much, the union workers ended up, for this year, getting a $2 an hour increase across the board for all different groups for their job levels.
So what would their hourly rate be for that?
The lowest hourly, hourly rate we have right now is almost $20, whereas before it was around 18. And we were able to give four more holidays to bring them into what, pretty much match what the current county holiday policy is. We were also able to give them some pay for standby, when, when we asked people to be on standby to, to pay people for that, whereas in the past, we, we weren't doing that. So, so yeah, it's a significant pay increase, and over to the next couple of years, it'll be a quarter next year and a quarter the following year. But there is the opportunity in the contract for them to ask to sit down and have discussions on that.
And then currently, how many employees do y'all, do you have?
We have 51 union, union workers in the Highway Department.
And then we have, thanks a lot, and we have, as far as openings, you have?
Right now, we have one opening, which last year at this time, we were, we had 13 to 14 openings.
Well, that's the moral of this long story of, before Skye took over and before I was elected, somebody thought it was a great idea to close a couple of highway garages and get rid of about 30% of the highway workers. So he's done a great job of getting that back up, and that's what collectively the Commissioners are working together for all of the other garages we have. The, the Granger Garage, which he alluded to, covered Granger and the plows, if you live in a county, once it snows this weekend. They, they start out of Riverside Drive, so your stuff will get plowed, but it's, we're working to find something out on that side of town so there can be the, the base for those people. They don't have to drive 25 minutes just to get to where they're gonna plow. So thanks to Skye for taking over and doing a good job getting the amount of people necessary. We probably need more as we go along, but once we get another garage out there, that'll be good. So, thank you.
Thank you, because that's what I was hoping to get done too. Thank you.
That's good. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement?
A motion to approve this agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we go on, I just, with the forecast of what we have coming on with Snowbugueta in 52 or whatever we're on now, we, we've been out, we'll be out pre-treating roads today and tomorrow to try and handle that first little bit of iciness we may get, and crews are all set, and we got trucks and everything all set, and we'll be plowing snow pretty much, if it falls the way they say, throughout the weekend, throughout the holiday weekend into next week. So we're prepared, and we'll be out there. I guess the one thing we would ask is patience, especially with getting into the subdivisions if we... if we get this much snow, and then also that everyone drive as safely as you can.
How many miles do you plow?
We have 1,200 miles of roads, centerline miles of roads.
How many cul-de-sacs?
We have about 700 cul-de-sacs.
Okay. And what email should people contact?
MikeMish@, no, if there is an issue and, and there's something, please call our highway department at 574-235-7800, and we'll get a work order in and get to it as soon as we can.
Or you could email any one of the commissioners.
Or you can email, then.
We can get in contact with them right away.
And if, if, for some reason, you don't get an answer at the highway department, and it's an emergency, you can always call dispatch. So, thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Next, moving on to the Health Department, approval to establish a partnership with Notre Dame regarding a social, socio-behavioral science team.
Good morning, Amy Rupe, Administrator with the Department of Health, offices on the 8th and 9th floor of the County City Building. And before you is a request for support to sign a contract with the University of Notre Dame for our social behavioral science team, and it would run for 24 months.
Is that?
No, go ahead.
Is that through a grant, or is that?
That's using ARP funds.
Okay. Is this something that, the first, God bless you, first time you've done this?
We'd like to hear that.
Bob Einter's Health Officer, offices on the 8th and 9th floor. Before I answer that question, if, if I could, I'm just curious, this item, the next two items, and the item referring to the Behavioral Crisis Facility were taken off the agenda shortly after Commissioner Baxmeyer met with four of the county council members, who, two of whom have been openly hostile to the Department of Health. And I'm just curious why these agenda items were removed from the agenda.
I'm going to have to ask you to decorum. I know everyone's excited here, you need to give us a minute, so Dr. Bob, if you wouldn't mind, we're not going to get, we're not going to get very far if you guys shout, and we can't have that, we need decorum, thank you. We will address that coming up here, it's something that Commissioner Baxmeyer is intending to address, but right now, we need to stay with germaneness here and stay on the topic. So, right now, we're on the approval to establish the Notre Dame partnership. If you could address that, that'd be great.
So, we have had good partnerships with the University of Notre Dame since my tenure that started three years ago, and we're trying to advance that partnership to bring on a social behavioral team. As we know, social and behavioral factors influence the incidence, prevalence, and outcomes of most, most health conditions. Such factors include, but are not limited to, access to and availability of quality housing, food, transportation, healthcare services, including mental healthcare services, personal and household income, family dynamics, gender, race, ethnicity, locale, personal attitudes and beliefs, implicit biases, and personality traits. To improve health in St. Joseph County, the Department of Health must understand these social and behavioral factors, promote those factors that improve health, and devise interventions to counter those factors that contribute to poor health. This requires an iterative process of identification of the problem, planning and implementation of a solution to the problem, and monitoring and evaluation of the intervention. Such improvement processes often occur in rapid cycle over the course of several months, though some processes occur in cycles that take several years. Improvement processes in public health require engagement by the community in concert with public health practitioners, inclusive of individuals with quantitative and qualitative measurement skills in the social sciences. For this reason, the St. Joseph County Department of Health reached out to the University of Notre Dame for the assistance of a social behavioral scientist or group of behavioral scientists. These scientists would function as a member of the leadership team of the Department of Health, they would play a lead role in identifying public health problems and designing and implementing and evaluating the department's interventions to address those health problems. Their input would enhance proposals submitted to extramural funding agencies, thus making the proposals more competitive and increasing the number and type of funding opportunities for which the Department of Health could apply, though of course, my understanding from Commissioner Baxmeyer in a conversation that I had yesterday with him, is that he's not keen to pursue extramural funding agencies except those which particularly pertain to his interest.
So, my question was, is this the first time that you've done this with Notre Dame?
This is the first time that we've reached out in having a contract to get the services of one of their social behavioral scientists. And I will also add that the University of Notre Dame has provided a match such that the, the funds that will be provided by the county will be matched two to one, one to two, by the University of Notre Dame. Will enable a three-year, presence of three-year commitment then.
Okay, so this commitment is a 24-month commitment?
Yes, sir.
And Notre Dame's committing to a three-year?
Notre Dame is committing to an additional year, that is correct.
And then will the county be asked to also contribute in the third year?
My expectation is, as we have shown over the last three years, that we're highly competitive for extramural funding opportunities, and that we have great capacity to, to apply for, compete for, and compete successfully for extramural funding. At no point will we be asking the county to pay for the continuation of this social behavioral science team with the University of Notre Dame.
So, in the third year, will you come back to us for more money?
That's what I just said, Commissioner Dieter, I will not come back to you for more money.
Okay, that's good. And then when, when will they have, will they give you yearly results, or will they give you a two-year study result?
Again, what we're looking at here is, we, we're engaged, we as a health department engaged in a multiple, different projects to address a multiple different health conditions. So, I can take, for example, one of the ones that we'd like to start is a initiative to reduce the incidence of preventable cancers here within, within the county. We know that several, several thousand people die each year in the county because of preventable cancers, and, and yet, we don't do screening adequately, and we don't do HPV vaccines adequately, and the reasons for this are nine times out of 10 due to, or eight times out of 10 due to social behavioral factors. And so, we want to try to identify what are the barriers, the social behavioral factors, identify those barriers, come up with interventions to address those barriers, and as we intervene, then monitor and evaluate what it is that we're intervening with, and make sure that we're doing it all just right. Again, this is the iterative process that I was referring to. We do this in, for COVID, we do it for suicide, we do it for mental illness, we do it for cancer, et cetera, et cetera. This is what a, a health department worth its salt should be doing. It ratchets up, if you will, it creates, if you will, an academic health department where we essentially create a system of care delivery, invite in research, invite in educators, and over time, improve not just the healthcare delivery system, but also recruit and train the next generation of healthcare providers in public health. And in addition to that, we are, we have a team that is more capable of asking questions and finding the answers to those questions as it pertains to a number of different social behavioral factors, that's what we call research.
Okay. Will they also study diabetes?
We currently are not engaged in diabetes. It is true that the, we're minimally engaged in diabetes. If we look across the county, for that matter, across the state and across the globe, there are chronic diseases are the, are the, are the number one burden of suffering within our county and within our country. And the chronic diseases are cancer and heart disease and mental illness, when we lump all of mental illness together, including addictive disorders and suicide. Those are the three priorities, and that's what we need to be focused on.
Thank you. I just want to note that, yes, we did discuss this, and I appreciate the additional information that you provided this morning, that's why it's on the agenda. There being no further questions or comments?
If that's why it's on the agenda, if you wanted more information, why don't we include the Behavioral Crisis Facility?
We will address that shortly. Do we have a motion to approve the, establish the partnership with Notre Dame regarding the socio-behavioral science team?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of a services agreement with Yolanda Washington related to the Fetal Infant Mortality Review Program. Ms. Rupe?
We are requesting support to enter into a contract with Yolanda Washington in order to provide maternal interviews with families related to our Fetal Infant Mortality Review Program.
Is this a, go ahead, agreement you've had in the past?
Yes, we currently have one, one contractual worker that is funded through this grant. We would like to bring on two more, Yolanda and then the next.
Who is Yolanda Washington?
Who is she? Okay, Ms. Sally?
She's here.
Oh, good. No, she's not here.
Good morning.
I'm not Yolanda. I'm Sally Dixon, I coordinate the Fetal Infant Mortality Review and Maternal Infant Health at the Health Department. Yolanda, I'm not going to be able to say all her credentials off the top of my head, but she's been part of the Fetal Infant Mortality Review Case Review Team since we started over six years ago. She's a registered nurse. She works for Head Start, she's been involved with Beacon Health System, and so part of the Fetal Infant Mortality Review Case Review is, besides studying the medical records and anything that happens with an infant loss or stillbirth, is, an important part of that is interviewing the mothers and families that went through that loss to get their perspective. And so, this is to increase our capacity to do that.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
And then if, do you want me to? Wait, because, okay, is that good?
What's the monetary value of this?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed 15,000.
Yeah.
15,000, okay. And then the, the data she gathers goes to, to you?
It does.
Okay.
So.
And then after that data, how do you, I guess, inform or disperse that to the public?
So, the way that works is, our case review team, that it's made up of people from all over the county, doctors, neonatologists, obstetricians, doulas, nurses, social workers, we review those, that the story that they share with us becomes part of that record. And then through the reporting that I do, we, that becomes part of the data and the recommendations, that's how we make the recommendations on what we can be doing to improve maternal infant outcomes.
And then it's basically prenatal care, how do you get that out to the community then?
So, it's way more than just prenatal care, certainly, I mean, that's part of it, is, so in reporting and presentations and, you know, it depends, sometimes we talk to legislators, sometimes I talk to physicians, sometimes it's community members, that's how we share it, you know, with everyone we can, depending on what the recommendation is, you know. Often, when we, when we have those interviews, people share that they don't feel like they're heard when they have signs and symptoms and, and, you know, so that they get the care they need.
So, so Yolanda, what she does is interviews with the families to experience the infant loss, so we're able to help people who have lost infants?
Right, and so, so part of that, and I used to do these myself entirely, and just as our program has grown, that it's just hard for one person to do all of that. So, so part of that, when we do speak with them, if they haven't connected with grief support, we have a really strong relationship with Center for Hospice, they have a lot of support for people, bereavement specifically for infant loss or stillbirth, and so we can connect them to that or any other resources that they might need.
Hoping we're helping those parents.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
While you're up, could you provide a little background on the other person, if you know?
The other person does happen to be here, Jennifer Carter.
Jennifer Carter.
And Jennifer's also been part of our case review team since the very beginning, so.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am here to ask for a contract to be approved, to be able to help out with these maternal interviews that are so important to our people here in our area, our mothers, our fathers who have experienced loss in any sort of way of an infant or a fetal loss that they have had.
Well, thank you.
Any questions I can answer?
No.
Great, I know there's other important things that people want to say.
Well, we, no, we'll do one at a time. First, the approval of the services agreement with Yolanda Washington.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of the services agreement with Jennifer Carter relating to the Fetal Infant Mortality Program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Before we move on to public comments, I would like to make some.
No business?
No, I'm sorry, there's no old business. Before we move on to public comments, I'd like to make a statement. And I'm going to read this so I don't leave anything out, that's okay. I would like to address some concerns I have heard from the public regarding health department initiatives, as well as comments generally on the county's overall need to address mental health and homelessness. When I took over as Commissioner in August of this year, it became clear quickly, very apparent, that the city of South Bend and St. Joseph County have numerous needs related to mental health and housing. In September of this year, I took the step of requesting that a group be formed to address those needs in a comprehensive, well-thought-out, and fiscally responsible manner, and I'm calling for the formation of this committee again today. Mental health and housing issues are addressed on a daily basis by numerous entities, including the Health Department, the Sheriff's Department, the Juvenile Justice Center, Portage Manor, the City of South Bend, the State of Indiana, our local hospitals and mental health providers, and many, many other local nonprofits. The needs of our community thus far have only been addressed in a compartmentalized fashion, which causes certain efforts to be duplicated and causes other critical needs to go unaddressed. To date, there has not been a consistent, ongoing, cohesive effort to address mental health and housing needs. It's my goal to bring all these stakeholders together to address the full continuum of mental health and housing needs, to ensure that these problems are tackled in a way that fully addresses the problems, not just one small part at a time, without considering the big picture. This approach will allow all of the stakeholders to pool their knowledge and resources in a manner that best addresses the needs that are faced. As it relates to the Behavioral Crisis Center, I'd like to clarify what's taking place. First, I believe the county has a need for a project like this, either in its current form or modified, to ensure that we best address the mental health needs of the community. The County Health Department, in partnership with the City of South Bend and Oaklawn, are proposing a Behavioral Crisis Center. This project is expected to cost over $5.5 million to construct and operate for three years. The problem is, the project isn't fully funded and is expected to cost taxpayers an additional $900,000 or more to operate every year after the first three years. We want to ensure that this process is not rushed and is well-thought-out. The money to fund the project is not being taken away, however, we would like to ensure that there is sufficient funding to ensure that the program endures far into the future. We received encouraging news recently from the State of Indiana. We understand that Representative Greg Sterwalt will be proposing legislation that will be looking at funding programs similar to looking at funding programs similar to the proposed Behavioral Crisis Center. On September 22 of this year, our office reached out to Representative Sturtevant and connected our Health Department and the Sheriff's Department together to coordinate efforts. I'm not sure whether any further communications between the county departments and the state have taken place since that time. For these reasons, we would like to ensure that we are not rushing the process and hold off on finalizing an agreement on the Behavioral Crisis Center until we can have several questions answered. Will the state be building, operating, or funding programs with state funds that will address these issues? Will there be funding available to operate this program after the first three years? If so, how much will it cost the taxpayers? Can we add services to this program to address needs that are not currently being recognized? To date, we have not received a written commitment from the city on exactly how much money is being pledged to this program or for how long. We need to know exactly what the city's commitment is for the upfront capital and ongoing expenses into the future. We need to know whether Oaklawn and the city will commit to fund any budget shortfalls after the first three years to ensure the program continues to run five or even 10 years from now. We need to know whether additional stakeholders to this program, such as the City of Mishawaka, local hospitals, mental health centers, the University of Notre Dame, and others, will also commit to supporting the program. With this in mind, the commissioners are committed to continuing to work with all of the stakeholders involved to ensure that a comprehensive housing and mental health program is addressed and created. Commissioner Dieter?
Sure. As President Baxmeyer alluded to, some of the things that we, the commissioners, are looking at is a comprehensive plan with everybody, not just piecemealing that's been going on. And just to let you know, the St. Joe County budget is roughly $250 million. As some of you know, that we operate Portage Manor. Portage Manor now has 110 residents. We own the property. We own Portage Manor. Those are the people that we are providing for there. Approximately $800,000 a year, we are losing. If changes aren't made to that program, taxpayers additionally would have to pay another $800,000 every year to operate the program. And at this time, Portage Manor, if you haven't been there, needs basically about $12 million of renovation just to keep it operational. Motels for now has been operated on Lincoln Way West at the Knights Inn by the county. The county has taken the lead on a city issue. And that's not the city of South Bend. It's St. Joe County has paid close to $5 million for that so far. There's a proposal to build a permanent shelter, which includes some funding from the state and the city, but would cost the county approximately $4.5 million to assist in building that shelter. The county would also be required to pay operating costs of approximately $1.6 million for the next two years to operate that program, an additional $1.3 million after that. Just to be clear, the $1.3 million per year is after the City of South Bend contributes $500,000 per year for the operation. These new programs are addition to the mental health and housing services that are already funded by the county. For instance, St. Joe County taxpayers currently fund a mental health levy of 2.2, which goes to Oaklawn. These are just some of the three programs that we're talking about of approximately $30 million in capital costs and $3.5 million in ongoing, ongoing costs. The county has been asked to pay nearly $20 million in capital cost with more than $2.5 million expenses every year. With the county expected to run a $3 million budget deficit next year, I believe the county needs to be very intentional in its next step regarding mental health and housing before commits $20 million in capital and agrees to pay more than $2.5 million every year into the future. So some of you who know us, me, the other two commissioners, should know that we're concerned about everybody. So whether you want to point fingers, you want to laugh, or just, that's up to you. But we take our jobs very seriously here, okay? So if you want to do that, that's on you. We have a large problem in this community, which everybody is here for that, okay? Everybody wants to do stuff, but at the end of the day, as President Baxmeyer alluded to, we're trying to find a way for everybody to be at the table, so we're dividing this up that it can be affordable for the taxpayers. As I alluded to, we have only so much funds to go around, okay? So again, if you want to shake your heads and stuff, that's cool. But at the end of the day, that's what we're looking at as the elected officials. So as we go down this path, and everybody has their three minutes you can talk about, that's what Commissioner Baxmeyer is suggesting, that we all get together and talk about what we can do collectively for St. Joe County. And that's what we intend to do. So you can talk up to three minutes about that, which is fine, but I really don't think it's fair to the commissioners that we attempt to get berated or sneered or whatever because you don't like what we're doing. That's why we're asking you to talk intelligently and let us know what you feel. Go ahead, ma'am.
Just a few reminders before we get started. Public comment will be three minutes each. It's not meant to be a dialogue. It's for the commissioners to receive information. Just want to remind everyone decorum is appreciated and expected. When addressing the commissioners, please state your name and your address for the record. And comments need to be germane, and they also need to be, hopefully, lack repetition. So if somebody has already gotten to what you're saying, if you can keep your comments truncated, that would be great.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Lori Nafziger. I'm the president and CEO of Oaklawn, 415 North Niles. As your community health center, it's been an honor to be part of the planning and leading the development of this crisis response center. Right now, I believe you're aware that if you have a behavioral health or substance use crisis, your options include jail, the emergency department, the streets, or maybe an inpatient psych unit. And very often, those are overkill. They're inappropriate. They're unnecessary, and they're expensive. So we're really interested in these crisis response centers, which are a proven model across the U.S. They're evidence-based. They show that they work. And they fill a big hole in our mental health system that does not duplicate any existing I'm really happy, my point today to you will be to introduce myself. I've met you before, but I'd be happy to meet with you to talk about the details and answers to many of the questions that you have. I do believe that we have sustainable funding in place beyond the three years. DMHA, the Department of Mental Health and Addictions, is actively working at a combination of state and federal funding that will sustain this model far into the future. So I don't expect funding going forward beyond this. Call me. Happy to meet with you. Thank you.
My name is Michael Friedland. I live at 226 North Jacob Street. I'm the rabbi at Sinai synagogue and on the core executive team of Faith in Indiana, St. Joseph County. Faith in Indiana is a vehicle for ordinary people of faith and goodwill to have an effective voice in public life. Our county chapter includes 25 congregations. We are Catholic, Jewish, Pentecostal, Protestant, and Muslim. We work with county chapters and partner groups across the state from Lake County to Clark County. Our group of 25 congregations and multiple community organizations has worked tirelessly to get funding to create a mental health crisis center and mobile unit to aid St. Joseph families whose loved ones deal with mental health crises. These families are Democrat, they are Republican, they are black, brown, and white, they are urban and rural. We care about this issue because no matter what your race, your zip code, or how you pray, when your family members are in crisis, we want to be able to get them help. Indiana ranks 43rd among the 50 states in terms of cases of mental illness and lack of access to care, according to Mental Health America, and was cited in Indiana Business Journal. But this body chose to accept $2.7 million of ARP, American Rescue Plan money, to fight this deplorable situation and create a mental health crisis center and mobile team to benefit so many members of our community. And Commissioner Baxmeyer, you yourself stated in the South Bend Tribune that your job is to put people first. And now the same body has chosen to push off signing the contract because you have questions. Now, now you have questions? It was your responsibility. How are we supposed to have confidence in you if when the time to apply, then you didn't do your due diligence? You didn't ask the questions. Now the money's been appropriated, now you have questions. There's only one question that matters, only one question you should ask, and I'll help you out. I'll ask it right now. How many people in this room, how many people online have, know of a family member or a friend, or they themselves suffer from mental health complications or illness? Okay, looks like the room is pretty full. The Book of Deuteronomy states, "I call heaven and earth to witness against you this day. I have set before you life and death, blessing and curse. Choose life." This body is charged with the welfare of our community. You should have chosen blessing and life. Instead, your failure is going to lead to misery and more death in our community. We are ashamed of you.
Reverend Greg Brown, the God Squad, 4626 Fellow Street. I stand here, my faith is in God and faith in Indiana. We push and we drive hard. We are affected. This is St. Joe County. How much is one life worth? We sitting up here pushing nickels and dimes and quarters and all that, but when you get a phone call that one of your family members don't want to live or want to hang theyself, taking drugs, where does it stop at? This weekend, I was faced with working for South Bend Schools, Parks, and Recreation. I run through kids, 16 to 25, to tell me they don't want to live. Try to make a phone call on Saturday or Sunday, and the crisis team is not there. And you got to turn around and pray. But you could pick up a cell phone and call Chief Rakowski, call Sheriff Redmond, call the mayor, and they striving to stick their hand out to push. But Dieter, you came off the same streets with me. And if I can't wake you up, I'm gonna shake you up, because faith in Indiana ain't going nowhere. If we got to bring a brick by brick and a stone by stone, we gonna build our own place and save this place. It's not a black thing or a white thing. It's a right thing. And we need to get going because this is happening Monday through Sunday. Somebody is dying in St. Joe County. It ain't about the city. It ain't about your street. It's about our county. I love people. You see the God Squad? I've been out here since 2003. Some of you people don't even know what's going on because you turn around and lay in your house and just listen to the news. Get out here and walk the streets with me. Stand up with faith in Indiana. Stand all the way up with us. And if we can't wake you up, we'll shake you up. I'm going back to you.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Go. I live at 921 Cottage Grove, South Bend, Indiana. I'm a member of the Faith in Indiana Geodivergent Task Force and have been part of it for more than two years. I don't know, well, I know Mr. Dieter. I've met Deb Fleming. I've never met you, Mr. Baxter. I did send you an email yesterday. I hope you will get back to me. I don't know if you've ever, like, been married, but with my old husband, it used to work that in order for anything to actually work, it had to be his idea. So sometimes I would be working on something for months, but until he thought it was his idea, it wasn't okay. The truth of the matter is, I've been working on this for over two years. And in fact, I've been working with a lot of these people for over two years. We've been working with Oaklawn. We've worked with County Commissioner Costelny. We've talked to Dale Devon, Linda Rogers, Ryan Mishler, Raphael Morton, Mike Hammond, Ryan Dvorak, Diana Hess. We've talked to the sheriff. I attend, I sit as the only non, like, official member on the board, or the group that's trying to work on this. I go to every DM meeting. I've spent well over 200 hours on this. This is not something fly-by-night. And to say that is frankly disingenuous. You met on September 19th with these people, and now it is the final hour, the final meeting before, before the end of the year? I'm sorry to say, I would like to give you the benefit of the doubt, but I'm having a very hard time. I work a lot with, with the professor of philosophy. He talks about virtues that are required, required for dialogue across difference. And these virtues are curiosity, humility, intellectual responsibility, attentiveness, empathy, and courage. And I'm feeling like this is a lack of courage. And this is why. There are a few members, and I don't know them all, but there are a few members of our community who have a scorched-earth policy towards the Health Department. They've basically decided because they didn't like what the Health Department did in terms of masking and masking and vaxing and closing down schools, that they're just going to tear the place down. And we have to name that. We have to be honest about that. Because if you're going to scrutinize every Department of Health thing like this, just because you don't like them, well, that's bad for all of us. That's bad for all of us. And let's be honest, I think we have to say that we need a little courage in the room. Please be courageous.
I'm a small investor in South Bend. I live at 1929 Doorwood Drive. My brother and I, we own 28 single-family homes. Two of those are duplexes, and then we have some vacant lots, 11 vacant lots we hope to develop. And I brought in my notice of assessment of land and structures, and it shows that payable 2023, it's going to be about 41 grand for property taxes. And I paid about 40 grand this year, and I paid about 40 the year before that. And I just want to let you know, as a taxpayer, I have faith in our Health Department, and I have faith in Oaklawn, and I want to be able to invest in a community with robust mental health services. And there are many other investors that wish to invest in communities that have those type of structures and support for mental health. Thank you very much, and please consider the positive economic impact. Thank you.
Mike McManus, 51940 Lilac Road. Every week in this country, we see stories on the news and in the newspapers about mass murders, mass shootings committed by people who have grave mental illnesses. In our own city, once a month, we see a killing by somebody who has a mental problem. While you diddle, Mr. Baxmeyer, and study and wait for the worst legislature in America in terms of healthcare funding, to do something, what have you done? What is your plan? And Dr. Fleming? I'm sorry, but it's, you're really disappointing. You have a medical background. You treated, I was told it can't be a dialogue, so, you treated patients. You were educated in science and medicine. And now you sit there and let Mr. Baxmeyer and Amy Drake, that's the woman who was screaming about the Health Department all year, Amy Drake, tell you things that are nonsense. After several of these meetings, you have come up to me in a very nice way and said, "All I want to do is to help people. All I want to do is to make people happy." Which people? These people? Katie and Jennifer got awards for helping somebody. You are blocking, helping hundreds of people in our community because you sit there, we all see it, and you listen to Mr. Baxmeyer, and you listen to Ms. Drake. That's just wrong. It needs to stop. We don't need to have another single loss of life because we don't have this crisis center, which is free money given to us by the federal government. We need the crisis center today.
And it's not that I'm not for this, okay? But the issue is, I was just told we're going to delay it because our attorney had to mention it.
It's not a dialogue, remember? It's our turn to speak.
Well, I know, but that's misunderstanding of what it is we're doing.
No, that means be quiet. It's our turn to speak.
Well, sometimes maybe you all should be quiet. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, but yeah. No, I love helping people. And my friend, Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Crouch, oh my gosh, she's working really hard to help mental problems too. So yes, I love working with her too. But then again, I was just told that, oh, we're just going to delay this a little bit. So anyway, that's just me. I'm finally saying something, yes. So yeah, that's just me. So yeah, that's just me. But yeah, I'm sorry, but yeah.
Good morning. My name is Megan Hartz, 1833 Portage Avenue. I want to bring this back down to the personal level. I want to tell you about my son, who was diagnosed with bipolar disorder in fifth grade. In fifth grade. I spent the next four years calling Oklon, calling every psychiatrist in the state, calling every service, every department, trying to get him the assistance that he needed. Every time, I was told that what my family needed, what my son needed was called wraparound services. It was only available through Oklon. Nowhere else. Nowhere else could you get these services. However, if you go to Oklon, you have to get funding from someone who's not you. The funding has to come through JJC, DCS, or Medicaid. My private insurance wouldn't cover it because they don't take private insurance. I can't pay cash. Because let me tell you, I was going to ask my parents to fund it if they took cash. You can't buy these services. Four years, I called Oklon every four to six months, for four years. During that time, we showed up at the doors of Epworth. We showed up at Michiana Behavioral. We showed up at places hundreds of miles from here. We were told, yes, your son is in crisis, but there's nothing we can do. And they sent us home. Finally, after four years, I stood on the steps of Michiana Behavioral, being told for I don't know how many times that, yes, my son was in crisis. There's nothing they can do. Take him home. And I got on the phone with Oklon. And I said, "I'm not getting off this phone until someone can give me what my son needs. I will show up at your front door. I will do whatever it takes." It was because I made those phone calls every four to six months, someone at Oklon, and I was told this when we achieved wraparound services, someone at Oklon wrote a grant application that piecemeal covered my son's wraparound services. Piecemeal saved my son's life. We don't need big, comprehensive, anything at this point. There are kids in this community, there are people in this community who are suffering and dying.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your comments.
Good morning. My name is Megan Boyk. I'm at 3827 Fellows. I'm a family physician here in South Bend. I work in clinic and in the hospital. My opinions today are of course my own. Both Beacon and the St. Joe Regional Medical Center Community Health Needs Assessment identified mental health as an important issue related to health in, in this community. And that was by your constituents. As a physician in the community who's often responsible for helping connect patients with mental health care, I agree wholeheartedly. And one specific issue that was identified in both of those Community Health Needs Assessments was access to mental health care. This is needed now. We can't afford to wait. I'm seeing patients today in the office in my afternoon clinic that would benefit from a program like this. I see patients like this every day in the hospital. I see patients like this every day in the office. We can't afford to wait any longer to support these patients in the way that they need. I really struggle with getting my patients who are in crisis related to mental health connected with resources in a timely manner. And it has been this way for the four years that I've been practicing here. And I was really, really looking forward to this mental health, this crisis, mental health crisis center as a way to help with this issue. And I was profoundly disappointed to see that it was removed from the agenda today and that we would have to wait even longer. From a system level, these patients often end up in the ER, in our hospital beds, awaiting placement for days, weeks, sometimes even months, keeping a couple of patients that I know in mind. And this is taking away beds from patients, especially in the post-COVID era, who really need care. And these patients could be more effectively and efficiently and with better care for their specific conditions, for mental health conditions. Placed elsewhere in the Crisis Center will help with that. Our hospitals are already overloaded, so having an additional place to put them would be really helpful and get them the help that they need as well. And I think that this is a very efficient use of our taxpayer dollars because many of these patients who end up waiting, waiting, waiting in the hospital, both adults and children, are on Medicare, Medicaid. That's a use of our taxpayer dollars at a higher level of care than these patients really need from a medical perspective. But the most important thing that I'm thinking about as I stand in front of you here today is some of the patients that I've seen. I'm thinking of a father that required psychiatric hospitalization after discovering that his child had been abused. Thinking of a teenager that I see who has had mental health crises because of the loss of a parent in severe bullying at school. I'm thinking of a young man that I saw in the hospital after a suicide attempt and who had to wait many weeks after he was medically stable, not getting the appropriate mental health care that he needed because we don't have those resources in the hospital. He needed to be in a mental health care facility and he was waiting for a bed.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Peter Lotzenheiser. I live at 4620 Acacia Place. I'm a student at Indiana University, South Bend, and I also, excuse me, and I am also co-chair of the Northern Indiana Democratic Socialists of America. Something that I really want to clear up for everyone is the fact that I'm gonna be 23 in about two weeks. My entire life, I have grown up watching my peers, friends, and family die. I have watched them on the news as school shootings happen. I grew up someone who is openly LGBT, watching friends have to talk other friends out of suicide. Watching kids 15, 13, try to play therapist for each other because our state governments have not been stepping up and doing what they need to do and caring for people. I understand that you have questions. That's great. It's good to want to know more things about severe issues. But while you wait and ask the same questions three, four, five times in a row, people are dying. Children are dying. People in our communities are dying of drug overdoses, of suicide. People are like Dante Catrell, having mental health breakdowns and getting shot by police because all they know how to do is yell over a microphone and shoot people. That's what they're, they're for. While you sit here and go, "Oh, we're on the same side. We're all friends here. We just want to help people." People are dying. I am under no illusions that you are on our side, that you want to help. You are the enemy in this regard. You have not been helping us. And cut the crap. Thank you.
My name is Peggy Go. I've been in South Bend for 70 years. And for 50 of those, I was a nurse. And most of my nursing care was in homes where people weren't there for mental illness, but their children were very disabled, needed daytime nursing. Turned out, many of those situations also needed a lot of mental health care, which you tried to provide, but there was no place to send them. I also have a daughter who died 20 years ago next month from suicide. She would go to Madison Center and after three weeks, be discharged, whether she was better or not, because that's how Medicaid works. The psychiatrists that were good enough to care for her only take cash. I have eight children, so she was the second from the top. There wasn't a lot of money. So, my address, by the way, I forgot. 18835 Pawnee Lane, South Bend. So I don't believe you've actually been in the office enough to appreciate this project. It's a project for people. I saw a lot of money going out for buildings, but people need that money. After my daughter died, my husband had a breakdown. He, we were very fortunate. We are very fortunate. We belong to a religious community. I was able to call someone to help me because he couldn't even process when I said, "Please stop. Please, Paul." So, one of the men in our friendship was able to help me take him to the doctor, to the hospital, where they were able to treat him. He was only there four days, but because he got good treatment, he has not been back since. So we've been very fortunate. But he could have been one of those people screaming in the street and getting shot. Because, and that's not their fault. It's not the police's fault. People, when they're in crisis, they can't process. So that's been very difficult. We're still living with his bipolar, which we found out that's what it was. But if you can get people to a place where they can be assessed when they're in crisis and get them help, then we will avoid, I don't know how many people, being in jail, which we pray for.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your comments.
Or being in the hospital, which we pay for.
Ma'am.
It's all cost a lot of money.
Ma'am.
And we can save that money and we can save people at the same time. And by the way, I'm a Republican, just so you know. Growing up in South Bend, crazy.
We need to move on to the next. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Scott Ruskowski, South Bend Police Chief, 701 West Sample Street, South Bend. Many things I can discuss here right now, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to some bullet points. First and foremost, if I, the Ruskowski family, had somewhere to turn, probably my cousin wouldn't be in ICU right now on life support as of two days ago. And I look around and I know many people here. Reverend Brown said it before. He's the one that calls me on weekends and the mayor and maybe other people sitting up here. We, as the police, are out killing people. I want to be clear on this. Between 800 and 1,200 calls a year, we deal with known mental crisis incidents. I'm telling you, anecdotally, as the police chief and a cop of 35 years, that number's probably a heck of a lot higher that we don't know about. What about the broken window? What about the theft? What about the stealing a pack of baloney from a grocery store? Domestic violence? I could keep going. But some of those, most of those probably involve some type of mental illness. With that being said, Rebecca alluded to it. Dr. Bob alluded to it. Three years now, I'll even go back further, some may even remember, we tried cops and clinicians. Everybody laughed at us. The police begging for help to take these things out of our hands that we as police should not be dealing with. But here we are, dealing with them. We have been transparent. We have been forward. We have been helping with everyone else in these meetings. I tell you, it started off three years ago almost to maybe one or two meetings a month. These have turned into one or two, three meetings a week. 988's in place. The Mobile Crisis Intervention Team has kicked up, they stepped it up more than a notch. They're 12 hours, five days a week. They weren't doing that before. It was sparse here and there. They're coming to our road calls. They're talking to our officers, introducing themselves, doing what they can to help us and what we can to help them. For, so for people to say, "This is last minute," it is not last minute. This is a three-year process. We have been doing this for this long. And I quite frankly think it's a slap in the face, not just to the police department, everybody that you see here who has somebody laying in ICU in a hospital bed, fighting for their lives because something could have been done. Right now, something could be done before the end of this year, and it's not. It's pushed off. So it's my cousin, their cousin, and yours. Wrong.
Good morning, Commissioners. James Mueller with offices on the 14th floor of this building. I am not coming here to yell at you this morning because I, I know that's not an ineffective strategy to working together and getting things done. But, you know, I know these folks are passionate and, and what you can hear from them is frustration and anger that we're not moving forward as quickly as we would like. And so, you know, I, I would say, I know what President Costelny's plan was. This is, this was part of Costel, President Costelny's plan. And we were set to move forward in this way. And, you know, we did have a meeting shortly after you took office and took the presidency. And we met in, in September. At that meeting, I took away that no new funding was, you know, that was up in the air. But I never had the, never had the, any inclination that previously, these previously committed funding was. And, you know, that could have been a miscommunication from that meeting. But, you know, that's, that's something that, when we were going through the budgeting process, you know, we put forward our, our amount in, in the, for the 2023 budget process. And so to say there's nothing in writing, well, it's in our budget. So, you know, this, if there were second thoughts or a new approach, it would have been nice to learn about this, you know, before the end of the year or during the budget process. And I, look, I'm not saying, you know, I know people are busy and we want to figure out how to move forward together. But, and I came here today, just, I didn't know if it was gonna be on the agenda. I didn't know if you had a different plan you were gonna share. And this plan, that, so, you know, thank you for sharing the plan. I, I mean, I, someone who's been working on this with, with the community, if we start adding multiple issues together that are difficult to solve individually, we're never gonna get anywhere. I mean, I, I think that's setting it up the fail. But I guess what, what the, the takeaway for me is, just come up with what is President Baxmeyer willing to do? Just tell us and we'll work from there. We want to work with you. We want to figure out how to work together. But you got to tell us, what are you willing to do? What are you willing to act on in the near term? So thank you so much for your dedication. I've, I'm also know how challenging budgets are and, and passions of, of the people we serve. But I hope we're able to work together and get something good done for our community. Thank you.
Hi, I introduced myself before. I'm Sally Dixon. I'm up here now as a, a citizen. I live in Granger, Indiana. I'm also a registered nurse. A lot of the things I was gonna say have already been said, so I'm gonna skip a little bit. But one thing I do know from my job is that for something to have reached the Commissioner's desk, because I have to do the same thing when I work on projects with community partners, means that people have, as everyone has said, have been working hard and, and had everything in, all their ducks in a row on a project for it to be, to get this far. And I, when it was mentioned, the idea of things being piecemeal, I think it's important to know that when it comes to social programs and health, we have to do things piecemeal. We have to apply for grants because there isn't money. And so the Governor's Health Commission, Public Health Commission is trying to work on that. But that's the reason it looks that way. But my lens is always through maternal infant health. And Indiana has the worst, some of the worst health outcomes in our country. Our maternal mortality rate is among the worst five in the nation. And that is largely due to mental health issues. Mothers who commit suicide, who take their life by suicide after they have a baby, accidental overdose. We need mental health care. Mental health is also a part sometimes of infant loss and stillbirth. And here's the thing. Indiana's health outcomes aren't bad because Hoosiers are any different than anyone in this country. Other states, Minnesota, Massachusetts, California, states that have the best health outcomes. Why is that? It's because things like this don't happen. Funding is put in place for the people. That American Rescue Money is our money. It's our tax dollars that are coming back to us. Why would we, why would we not do that? So you have the ability, you have power to do this, to talk to the people who are already working on this project that has, has been said in, in place for a long time. It has bipartisan support, as we've seen, law enforcement, health system, city and county support. And it shouldn't not go forward because some people don't like some of the people doing the work, if that's the case. So I'll just close with saying, you know, the people and families in this county can't wait. And so I hope that when you reconvene, since this won't happen today, that the new council at their first meeting will reappropriate the money, if that's possible, and actually put families first.
My name is Marla Godet. My address is 55705 Sichuan Drive. I live in Osceola, Indiana. I am a mental health professional as well as a community advocate and other things. In 2020, I was read to- In 2020, I was read to read the Book of Ecclesiastes, and it got me through the pandemic because it speaks to things such as this. We are here because of nothing more than people wanting something and others having power and not seeming to understand that sometimes you have to give the people what it is that they want. Because you serve the people in the masses. When we're in public office, we serve the people in masses, even when we don't oftentimes agree with the people. And so we make things happen with our strategies so that the people can get what they need. There's money there, there's money here, and these things have already been done and appropriated for. And so it would be a good opportunity and a wise decision to give the people what they need. In Osceola, I almost hit a man going into Walmart because he and his partner sit in homelessness every day. And this time, it was dark because the season have changed and they were under blankets, and I couldn't see them. Over in Mishawaka, I'm driving and I almost hit a woman because she's sitting in a parking lot. And I'm driving slow, but these people are sitting out covered now because I'm not seeing them. And the seasons have changed. It's cold out. We have to take care of people. I get the phone call because, "Marla, Marla, my child is bullied, is bullied, is bullied, and now where do I go? She just cut her wrist. There's nowhere to go, there's nowhere to go." Because she's 10. Because there's nowhere here for a 10-year-old. But I don't have transportation, and now she's gotta get to Plymouth because we don't have a facility here to take care of them. Then when I get her there, I gotta leave her. I gotta leave my baby. When you don't live those experiences, or you don't even have friends who live those experiences, and no one's telling you that this is the reality of so many people, it's hard to understand. And so sometimes you have to listen to the majority of the people because they're not making it up.
Your three minutes are up. So, thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Justin Howell, I live at 1205 South 27th Street here in South Bend. I'm not part of any group, I don't have any qualifications, I am just a guy here who has suffered from mental health crises. I'm lucky to have family and friends that helped me get through this year. There have been times this year where I didn't know where to turn because I didn't have access to those people. And called the mental health crisis line, how suicidal. I was provided a list of places around to call, several picked up, none of them had spots. None of them could see me. I didn't know what to do. I've been lucky enough, I was able to pull myself together. I am in a much better spot now, but I heard about this 12 hours ago. I had read throughout the year, I had heard about this project several times, I won't claim to be invested in it, I won't claim to have put so many hours that these people But it's something that I was looking forward to and I knew we needed. And I won't say I understand your reasonings, I understand why you say them, and I'm not saying they aren't true, but I don't trust this state with our health. The best I can do is, heard about this and put our trust in you. Yeah, thank you.
My name is Christopher Cobb, I live at 215 East Bokegan Street in South Bend, Indiana. I'm not a public health professional, nor someone who has an immediate family member who's been affected by mental health issues. But I'm somebody who has concern for those people who do, and who has watched this process unfold over the last several years. And so, what I want to say to you Commissioners, is that from a political standpoint, from the standpoint of how are you going to govern St. Joseph County, this morning has been disgraceful. I have never seen, and I've been at meetings over the years, a number of times, when the Chief of Police, South Bend, comes in to say, "What the hell are you doing?" When the mayor comes in and very politely says, "What the hell are you doing? We talked in September, we had an agreement, we put the money in the budget." You had your chances to ask questions, and then you come in here today and say, "We have questions, we need to look at the bigger picture." That's called gaslighting. That's blaming the people who've been working for years on this, for years on this, pulling all of the partners together, having lots and lots of hard conversations, finding money, and saying to them, "Oh, we need to collaborate, we need more collaboration." The fact is, the one who is not collaborating is the one who is refusing to sign the contract for the project that has been prepared carefully by many partners, the money has been appropriated by the county council. All that you have to do, all that it's your job to do is to execute, you're the executives, to execute the financial plans for public health that have been made by the public health professionals of this county and by the county council, providing funding for them to do their work. All you have to do is sign the contract. Anything else that you're telling us is just a bunch of ass covering because you have other people that you don't want to look bad to, and you don't like how it looks when lots of people are angry with you because you are neglecting the public health, because you're neglecting the needs of community for political reasons that we can't see, but we know are causing you to lie to the public about what's actually going on. And that's disgraceful, and you're off to a terrible start, and you need to get, as someone said earlier, some courage. You also need to remember how much, how important integrity and communication are. You're gonna be partnering with these people for years if you stay in this role. How do you think your relationships with those partners have done?
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your statements.
Well, I'm sure my three minutes are up, so I'll just...
You're gonna need to...
Yeah, you can keep telling me that.
Yep, and if you don't leave, we're gonna have a problem and you'll have to be removed.
Yeah, I know.
I'm gonna need you to step down.
Yeah, I've been here many times before. Your show of process and of dignity is a sham.
If you do not sit down, you'll be trespassing.
Hi, my name is Garrett Blad, I live at 1428 Merrickold Way in South Bend. And I'm very disappointed today because this kind of system would have been helpful for my family. My brother Austin passed away a few weeks ago, who suffered with mental illness for a long time. And hearing person after person after person today come up here and say how many people are impacted by these crises, and let me be clear, it's 10:00 AM on a Tuesday morning, there are thousands more across this county who need something like this in their lives. And for people in positions of authority to come in here and say the process hasn't been thorough, that the mayor in the room has not moved money that he's committed when he's sitting right here, it's hard for us to take this seriously. Because the appropriate time to do this would be years ago, but the next best time to do something like this, to catch people before they fall, is right now. We are not joking around. These are our family's lives at stake. And I just want to close by speaking to the people here. It can feel powerless to sit in this room while three people have a gavel and can move millions of dollars to save our lives. But the real truth is, they are accountable to us, and elections have power. Let me be very crystal clear here. In 2024, there will be an election, we have two Commissioners up for election, Commissioner Derek Dieter and Commissioner Deb Fleming. Both of them could turn this Commissioner Board, so in two years, this vote and others would look very different. I implore all of us today to get clear about what's really at stake in our community, because if we want a public health department that is fully funded, if we want our brothers and sisters and sons and daughters to get the care they need, we need different officials at the helm who are gonna take this seriously so that all of us, black, white, and brown in South Bend, Mishawaka, Granger, North Liberty, get the care they need because we all deserve it. Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Ash, I live at 3830 Langley Drive in South Bend, Indiana, on the south side. I'm really disappointed in you Commissioners, and why am I disappointed in you? It's been in the South Bend Tribune, it's been on TV stations, I know that people who worked on this crisis center have contacted you all, and all of a sudden, at the last moment, you all decide you have questions. I don't understand that. You've known about this crisis center for many, many, many months. Again, it's been in the newspapers, they've contacted you, and all of a sudden you have questions? I'm sorry, but I think these questions, all of a sudden, are to slow this process down and to ultimately not see this happen, or if it happens, to have it happen in a way where there is not a lot of input from our health department. Again, I finish by saying, I am very disappointed. And I began to question, what kind of leadership are we having when you wait to the last moment to ask questions when you've known for many, many, many months about this project? And I hate to think this is a way of you having a stalling tactic. Thank you.
Emily Truby Weller, I live at 62485 Miami Road, South Bend. I'm also one of the pastors on staff at First United Methodist Church, 3 through 3 North Main, right down the road here. At First United Methodist Church, we have a food pantry, a three-day-a-week soup kitchen. We house the Recovery Cafe and the Upper Room Recovery Community. Pastor Vicky Van Nevel, who is our senior pastor and myself, we see people in mental health and addiction crisis every single day of the week. We are in close contact with those in our community who would benefit most from a crisis center. But I'm talking to you today as a parent. I also have two kiddos, they're almost two and four years old. And we try to instill in them the idea that it's okay to make mistakes, that when you do make a mistake, there's a way to make up for it too. The fancy church word for a mistake is sin, right? But I think it's much easier to just say, "We make mistakes, each of us, throughout our lives, every day, small and big." I hope that today, the folks gathered here have convinced you that you have made a mistake. Do not let our anger or our passion make you think that we do not want to work with you, because if we didn't, we wouldn't be here. What we are here to do is to give you the opportunity to correct your mistake. We teach... I've taught my children that when you make a mistake, you say, "I'm sorry, are you okay? And how can I help?" And you try to make it better. You have the opportunity to do that today. "I'm sorry, are you okay? How can I help?" I know you can help, and I hope you will. In a South Bend Tribune article on October 30th, Commissioner Baxmeyer was quoted as saying he was proud of this vote, his vote on this issue. You can still be proud of that vote. Do the right thing, sign the contract.
Terry and Deb Curry, Elkhart, Indiana, we kind of walked in on the wrong thing. Public forum today, we come to ask you, we don't vote for you, but we sure don't hate you. Our thing here today is public safety. When we keep continually calling in to the road department in your county about safety issues, guard railings taken out, streetlights taken out, all we get is a political view. There's no money, we have nobody to fix it. Two years later, the guard rail at McKinley and Capitol Avenue, and he says, "Well, we finally found some money, but now we're gonna have to wait to get it approved." We go to County Line Road and Ash Road, two streetlights are out, you guys are responsible to take care of it on the Elkhart side. There's no money to do it. The fence at California Road and Ash Road, somebody ran through it. There's nobody wants to take responsibility to fix it. Said, "Give me the number of the fence company, I'll do your job for you, I'll call them, get the bid." Can't do that, we can't give you that information. So I come to you with respect that, I paid these taxes, I pay a lot of taxes over in this county, Elkhart County, and we expect if you tear up something, it needs to go back as it was. Another example, Birch Road and McKinley, three, four years ago, policeman hit the signal box. Well, that's an accident, the city has insurance. What do we get in its place? We used to have photo sales, so you show up there at time, the traffic would move continuously. And he says, "Well, we couldn't find nobody to build a box like that, so we just stuck one in there, and you're gonna live with it, because now we're gonna make that four lane." No, we paid taxes, same way with the fence, we paid taxes. Please fix what you tear up. And you can call me, send me, I'd be glad to talk to you. I'm tired of Andy talking political and blaming it on Elkhart County, Elkhart County blames it on St. Joe County, and I paid the damn taxes and I want it repaired. You would want the same thing, if you wreck a police car, you want it fixed. If you wreck something, you want it fixed, back like it was, not what somebody says, "Oh, we only have the money for that." But thank you, and we don't hate you. And I can find the money for you to do everything. Quit giving it to your crane, get rid of the idiot. Jesse Davis, PO Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. So I want to start off by saying this issue here kind of mimics something else that the community have been really out there stomping their feet about and wanting to happen, and that was called a Citizens Review Board. Because people were being killed in our streets, okay? That Citizen Review Board, Derek Dieter, you sat on the council and numerous, numerous conversations happened. And we heard the same thing back then, "Oh yeah, we're gonna make this happen, we're gonna..." Guess what? Today, that Citizen Review Board still ain't around, it's not, it's nowhere. Same thing going on here today. Let me tell you what, I'm a citizen of St. Joe County and South Bend and Mishawaka, and to keep hearing people like Mr. Baxmeyer say, "Well, the city didn't this, the city did this, oh, it's up to the..." No, the city's part of St. Joe County as a whole, and we're part of this damn county. My cousin was one of the most promoted in the news media suicides in St. Joe County. It was Michelle Ellenberger who blew her house up in Granger several years ago. She didn't die in that explosion, but our county prosecutor tried to prosecute her because she was in a bad mental state. And so they were like, "Oh my God, she put all these people in danger." No, she wasn't thinking about anybody else, she was thinking about killing herself. She didn't accomplish it, but guess what? Several months later, her parents, my aunt and uncle, found her hanging in their shed. I have a neighborhood child who was 17, grew up with my children, I live on a dead-end street in Mishawaka, I've been there 50-some years. They came home from school one day. My kids came in the house, they were there maybe five minutes, and we hear screams and people crying, and we go out and the police and ambulance show up. The 17-year-old neighborhood child, who was best friends with my kids, had hung himself in his basement. My wife, five years ago, was suicidal, she had a very bad mental crisis. It took me six months to get my wife into...
It took me six months to get my wife into see a professional to get medication, because the only people that can give the medication are in these mental hospitals. Your primary care doctor can't do anything. He had to prescribe mild tranquilizers, which probably caused a little more harm than good, just to keep her on highs and lows. So don't give me this shit, you have more questions. Get this thing signed. Your job isn't to question, and your job isn't to second-guess. The council sent it to you. Sign the damn thing. That's your job. Do your job or we'll vote your asses out.
Good morning. My name is Katie Scrafford. I live at 706 West LaSalle, South Bend. I'm a clinical psychologist working here in our community of South Bend. There's an urgent need for mental health providers here. Most of our mental health providers have a one-to-two-year waitlist, and we've been hearing from our community about the effects that has on the lives of their family members. Many of our mental health providers have stopped taking people for assessment on their waitlist, adult and children, because the waitlists are so long. I was extremely heartened last year to hear that this mental health crisis center had been approved. It showed that our South Bend leaders understand the urgency of mental health needs in our community. It showed they understand the direct connection between mental health, substance use, and crises like homelessness and suicide. I'm deeply discouraged that this has been taken off the docket for approval. A mental health crisis center is an essential emergency response team like a fire department. We're unable to have a safe and healthy community without it. As we've been hearing today, mental health and substance use tear families apart, they ruin people's lives, they place undue social and financial burdens on our community. Adults in crisis are less able to work, have more medical problems, and are at a higher risk of landing in the county jail, simply because we don't have the appropriate services to care for them. Mental health crises also increase the risk of child abuse. Children with parents in crises often experience anxiety and depression, and that affects their school performance. They have more trouble learning because they can't focus in the classroom or they can't make it to school. They're also at increased risk of behavioral problems and substance use as way of coping with their own mental health struggles as they reach adolescence. Providing effective treatment for mental health crises and substance use not only shares, shows care for our community, it reduces the resource burden on the police, emergency rooms, DCS, our county jail, and our school system. I don't know that I've ever seen a police chief begging for help. It's been very clear from hearing from the police this morning, from our religious leaders, from our healthcare leaders, our nurses, our psychologists, our other mental health workers, that a great deal of work over the past few years has already been done with the systems in our community that try to provide care for people in crisis. These are crises. We can't have waitlists. We can't continue to wait. When someone is in a mental health crisis, we have to be able to respond now. I would really, really beg you...
Your three minutes are up. So thank you so much for your comments.
...to put this back on the agenda and vote to approve it.
Hello. My name is Akila Karanja. I'm a nurse practitioner. I reside at 1002 West Washington Street. I work at a primary healthcare clinic which serves underserved community, 1010 North Bendix Drive, Indiana Health Center. I concur with the mental health personnel, primary care personnel, nurses. There's a shortage of psychiatrists throughout the country. There's a shortage of psychiatrists in this area. If I have a mentally ill person, patient, they're going to go to a waiting list. Right now, in primary care, we are dealing with mental health issues. We have a psychiatrist who consults with us on a monthly basis. He doesn't want just regular depression, because a lot of people are depressed. He needs those people who are really, really in crises. I do see people in crises. I've had the opportunity to deal with people who felt homicidal and had the forethought to come and speak to me and go forth. I was very disheartened myself to see that this was taken off the docket, and I wonder through what mechanism it could be taken off if monies were allocated. I know what's going on. I've lost patients, children who look like they had behavioral issues but end up dead, don't come back to well-child visits because of not being in services. This mental health initiative and place for people would help me as a provider, would help the community which is indeed in crisis. I live in this community, and I hear the police going up and down the streets all the time. I hear people drag racing down Lincoln Way all the time. We need help, and I believe that all people can work together. I believe that commissioners and people who are not commissioners, who have our duties other places, can work together to create a South Bend that is mentally stable. We could be a model for the state of Indiana, and we can be a model for the United States of America, which is a model for the whole country, which is a model for the whole world. We can do it. All we have to do is say we want to do it. So I am asking you, please, put this back on the docket. We, as nurse practitioners and primary care providers, need this help. We can't do our job while our patients, who are mentally ill, are not taking their diabetes medication, not taking their hypertension medication. Now, we are being graded upon how well our patients are doing. We need help. Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Ponco. I live at 16222 Chandler Boulevard, Mishawaka. I'm 74 years old, master's in social work, MBA from IU. Worked for 40 years in human services, Family and Children's Center, Madison Center, St. Joe Medical Center, New Avenue's Employee Assistance, Midwest Behavioral Health. Managed the behavioral health benefits for tens of thousands of people in Indiana. I understand your predicament, your concern about the overall picture of behavioral health services from residential care, community mental health, hospital care, inpatient, outpatient, the whole network. You have in front of you a grant opportunity. This, this testimonial, this is the tip of the iceberg. This is just the tip of what is happening in our community. I've been here 50 years in this community, loved it, worked it, took the challenges on, listened to the people that would call, families desperate, addictions, domestic violence, suicidality. I know you're confronted with coming to an overall plan for the community. I have to trust you're working in the best of faith, but there's nothing to preclude having a components of service in place as you go forward for a broader plan. This is one minute, small component, but it's an essential component. And yes, you may not have got the whole plan in place. I understand you want to put in place another study committee. I've been watching this for 50 years. We've got big things to do. You've got big budgets to handle.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate them.
Ah, I've reached my limit. Have I reached my limit? We've all reached limits.
Man, we all have rules we have to follow. Thank you.
Yes, we do. I'm just asking you to reconsider putting this place, this component in place, and please be a little more respectful.
I'm the one following the rules, and you need to sit down. Thank you.
I will.
Thank you.
Cheryl Nix, 17901 Sable Ridge Drive, South Bend, Indiana. And because it seems to be a big concern, I assure you, I do not actually live in the city. I live outside the city. I have a South Bend address. I live in Clay Township. I guess that's important to some people. Regarding taxpayer money, that was brought up a lot about why this contract's not being signed, concerns about money. I want to stand here in front of you commissioners, especially my commissioner, Commissioner Baxmeyer, to tell you, I will gladly pay more taxes if I can save a life. And I would imagine many of these people would do the same. I would also like to remind the commissioners that they spent $1.5 million of our taxpayer money on legal fees last year. I think that we have, obviously, money that we can spend, we just have to choose where it goes. Dr. Fleming, you said we're not canceling this, we're just postponing it. I just want to remind you that if we do not sign this contract by December 31st, we lose the $2.7 million of ARP funds. And in summary, this was not a rushed process. It was a long-term well-planned project. It had huge support 9-0 council vote, support of law enforcement, support of commissioners, and we do have funding mechanisms in place to take it beyond the first three years. Thank you.
My name is Will Mayfield. I live at 50839 Brownstone Drive in Granger, Indiana. I can't believe I'm standing up here. I didn't even know about this meeting 24 hours ago, but heard about it on the news and felt compelled to come. I won't get emotional about family health issues, because you've already heard all of those pleas today, and I don't want to cry in case this ends up on news. But what I can bring is a view... I don't know you guys. There's obviously a lot of political tension, people insulting and things that it's never a good way to persuade people, so I think that's not a great approach that people have had. The approach I want to share with you is my experience in being, you know, in the business world for 20-plus years for multiple Fortune 500 companies. I've got MBA and business degrees and so forth. I've done business cases my whole career, and I hear that that's where your guys' concerns are, and I thank you guys for looking at that. You can't let emotions get in the way and just spend haphazardly, and I hear you guys are trying to take the, you know, the right approach of looking at where the money's being spent. I can assure you that whatever business cases you've seen, they're wrong. Every business case I've ever seen is wrong. Those numbers won't fall that way. But you have to take an educated guess and say, "Hey, you know what? Is this the right thing, or is this the wrong thing?" I think there's got to be tons of upside in the overall community, and the financial benefits that come with a stronger mental health in the community, and the cost of the mental health issues that are out there have to far outweigh any dollar amount you're going to spend on getting these things through. So if you're looking at dollars and cents, I just encourage you to realize there's got to be tons of upside if you're looking at the financials. Put away the emotions, just look at the financials. There's got to be a stronger benefit there. I hear that you feel state funding is coming on the way, and there could be duplicate spending. Man, that would be a great problem. That would be a great problem to have. I pray that that is where it goes, so I encourage you to find ways to bring this together, make something happen. Please don't lose this $2.7 million. Please find a way to give people a place to go. Thank you.
I'm Joel Devancher. I live at 1413 McKinley Avenue. I'm a doctoral student at Notre Dame in Peace Studies and Psychology. Living on McKinley Avenue, which is not even all that close to downtown, there have been many occasions where I've had to go to my 10-year-old son's bedroom and explain how we might best respond to the gunshots we've just heard sprinkled around through town. And I know the underlying causes of those gunshots are incredibly complex. They have as much to do with crime, desperation, as with mental illness, but I do know, as a psychologist, that mental illness is a huge part of it. Also, as a student of Peace Studies, I'm aware of how important trust is for the process of working together, for the process of being able to get things done and move forward. And what I've seen today is a collapse of trust. Maybe the trust has been eroding for a long time, but I would implore you to do what you need to do to restore that trust and to help convince me to stay in South Bend after I graduate, to stay in the place where my spouse grew up in Mishawaka, because honestly, after hearing all of these gunshots, after getting the sense that I live in a community that doesn't really particularly want to take action on these problems, the last place I want to live the rest of my life and have the rest of my career is here, and St. Joseph County doesn't look too good these days.
My name is Rolanda Hughes. I'm a volunteer... My address is 1029 Riverside Drive, South Bend, Indiana. I'm a volunteer community advocate at Broadway Christian Parish, two mornings a week, with our community hospitality program that particularly works with people who are experiencing homelessness. At least once a week since the crisis response team has been in place, we have occasion to call for their assistance. The team is essential, they're very helpful, but they don't have any place to take someone who's in the midst of crisis at the moment. Far too many people end up in the county jail. As a lay pastor at my church, I pre-COVID visited every Tuesday morning people in the county jail whom I knew. In any given week, 20 people I know were in the county jail. That continues to be true, but visitation has changed. Most of those people ended up have mental health issues and/or ended up in jail as the result of a mental health crisis. One of the key supporters in the coalition that's been planning for the past couple of years has been Chief Redman. He's been very much on board with the fact that we need a place to take people to stabilize other than the county jail. Once they get into the jail system, they're not let out overnight. If they stabilize, it's still a long process, and they have many legal needs to attend to, and it becomes a bigger and bigger problem. Other families I know who have been working on this have had a similar situation with legal bills and situations that didn't need to develop because a mental health crisis got them into the legal system. I would implore you to do what several previous people have suggested, and Pastor Emily, that is to say, fix this. Please recognize the value of the testimony you've heard today. I've been part of the jail diversion working group for a couple of years. We have looked at best models from across the country. People have visited key places who have crisis response centers and employing best practices. The working team that is managing this as it moves forward is very diverse in terms of professional and lay backgrounds, and we need you to, as Emily suggested, step back and say, perhaps we do need to do this. We need to do this right now. We need to not jeopardize $2.7 million in ARP money that has been set aside for this. You're very clever people. I want to work with you into the future, but this is important to get done now. I believe that if it's not done now, there's the chance that it won't be...
Your three minutes are up. Thank you so much for your comments.
...reapproved. Please step back and fix this.
Hello. My name is Dr. Louise Williams. I have a PhD in...
I have a PhD in philosophy, which I received from Notre Dame here. I live at 1401 Cedar Street here in South Bend. And you've heard a lot of kind of emotional appeals here today. I'm sure you all have noticed this theme, which matters, right? Mental health means people, people die, right? So, that's really important, and I love that so many people have been able to share that. I would like to take a little bit of a rational appeal here. You know, one of the things that was mentioned when you guys were explaining that you didn't want to move forward with this right at this moment, was that you were concerned about redundancy. And that makes a lot of sense. Redundancy doesn't always serve us, right? But when I think about the solution that was proposed, which was you would like to do more research, you would like to learn, study more about this, I'm seeing a little bit of a tension there, right? Because this project has been going on for, for many years now. People have worked very hard. I suspect a lot of the possible questions that could be asked have been addressed. And we heard at the very beginning from the Director of Oaklawn, that she had a lot of answers for the kinds of questions you guys were coming up with. So, I worry that on the one hand, you're saying, well, we don't want to do this because we don't want redundancy, so we're going to create a different form of redundancy by redoing some of the work that has already occurred here. So, my recommendation would be if you would like to take a firm stance and not do this, which I hope you would change your mind, but if you do that, I would just recommend not leaning too hard on the redundancy concern, because it's a little bit uncomfortable, maybe hypocritical comes to mind. Thank you so much for listening.
Conseil McCall, 833 South 30th Street. When I was in law school, we had a case study where a mother and father only had enough money to feed their kids for one week. So, they decided that because they could not secure sustainable food for the rest of the month, and because the money they had would not buy nutritional food that would meet the USDA guidelines, they decided not to feed their kids and let them starve. Question was, should they be prosecuted? And I leave that question for you.
I'm Clavall Hunter, the pastor of the South Bend, Berean Seventh Adventist Church. On behalf of faith in Indiana, we want to thank you for hearing the concerns of the people here today. So many parents and leaders you've heard from today are doing their best each and every day to keep those suffering with mental illness safe. A lot of good projects got approved today, but it's unfortunate that the crisis response center contract was not approved and signed today. You have the power to change that. You don't have to wait tomorrow. You can do that today. Just like the trails that were approved, that I heard you love so dearly, the demolition projects that were approved, and even the purchase of police cars got approved. They are priority in our city. So, I say mental health care should also be a priority in this county. The Bible says, "I call heaven and earth to record this day against you that have set before you life and death, blessing and cursing. Therefore, therefore, choose life that both you and your seed may live." So, as a pastor, a spiritual leader in this county, we're asking you commissioners to do the right thing by signing the contract for this crisis response center. I know you love the people. I know that you care. I know that you take your job seriously. Let's show the people how much you love them by choosing to do the right thing. Choose life. We have the funding to take care of hundreds of lives for the next five, 10 years. Let's do that, starting today. God bless you.
Seeing nobody else immediately stepping up, I see there's one hand raised on, online. No, I guess not.
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Thank you. Cynthia Heckman-David, MD, 125 Gemini Lane, Waukertown, Indiana. One hundred percent of the comments this morning have been in favor of funding a mental health crisis center with American Rescue Plan grant money, but I really like your idea of coordinating mental health services in a responsible way. There's no conflict here. There's no conflict with approving the ARP money for the mental health crisis center now and still planning for the future. I see absolutely no reason why you, our Board of Commissioners, can't do both. I've lived and worked in this community for over forty years and have seen a steady deterioration in the budget of our health department and local mental health resources. So, when Governor Holcomb's Public Health Commission report was presented earlier this month, I was relieved to see their recommendations. If you haven't read the governor's commission report, you should. The commission recommends that local boards of commissioners and councils provide local health efforts with stable, recurring, and accessible funding, and that we increase our state plus county funding for Department of Health to $91 per person total. Many states fund their departments of health completely with state dollars. In Indiana, Department of Health funding is done partly by county and is usually tied to property taxes. Therefore, there's a wide discrepancy in Department of Health funding from a dollar twenty-five per person in some rural counties to eighty-three dollars per person in Marion County. The average is twenty-three dollars per person with county funding and fifty-five dollars per person total. The national average, though, is ninety-one dollars per person. So, Indiana is funding only a little more than half the average nationally. This has contributed to poor outcomes locally and for our state. The American Rescue Plan appropriation for the mental health crisis center lapses in ten days. This is needed money. It just makes sense to use it before we lose it. Can you give any reason why you can't do both? Use the ARP money and still coordinate services in a responsible way, planning for the future? Approve the ARP money for the mental health crisis center today. Thank you.
I believe we have one more person on line.
Uh, hi, my name is Marty Wolfson. I live at 809 Park Avenue in South Bend. My understanding is that there's 2.7 million dollars available from the American Rescue Plan that could be used to address the urgent mental health crisis in our community. But I heard President Baxmeyer earlier this morning say that no funds would be lost. So, I would appreciate an explanation from President Baxmeyer why this money would not be lost. And if it is to be lost, I would urge the commissioners to put this issue back on the agenda and prove it, approve it, to address the mental health crisis in our community. Thank you.
Appreciate all of the sentiments so eloquently expressed, and that will be considered going forward. Do we have a motion to recess?
Point of order.
You've had three minutes.
I'm not done making, I'm making a point of order. This is run by Robert's Rules of Order, and you, sir, work for us. So, I would like to make-
Do you have a motion to recess on the table?
So moved.
Mrs., Dr. Fleming, this morning you said you wanted this back on the agenda. I heard you right over there. Thank you. I know you're just doing your job, Mr. Mish, but why don't you have the courage-
Reporting stopped.
Well, we are. We're gonna try to-